This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so we're starting our meeting, a regular meeting of the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee for the month of May. I'm calling the roll. Darcy DeVal is present. Salima Harbison, I know Salima had a conflict and cannot make it. Shad Pelazari also had a conflict, but a nice one because his son is getting a big award at school tonight. So we're very excited about that. Darnell Powell, I don't see Darnell on quite yet. Deanna Roberts is present. I'm present. Chris Mobley's present. Shalane Marion's present. And then we also have Erin Silveira, our city attorney. So the plan was for us to start our meeting and then go immediately into executive session with Erin to get a tutorial on Rosenberg's rule of order and then review some other city ordinances or policies that are applicable to members of these advisory committees. And Shalane and I were emailing, texting prior to, and it doesn't really make a sense to have that session with Erin unless we have other members of the committee who are typically on. And it's just a confluence of events where people had conflicts with tonight's meeting. So we don't have everyone here. We don't even have a quorum to be able to do anything. So Erin, I apologize because I know, I know you're supposed to present previously and I spaced on that one inviting you to the meeting. And now here we are in May, hoping to get through this with you. And I think we're gonna have to push it. So I guess one question, does our meeting date in June work for you possibly?
What date are you guys meeting in June?
So the second Wednesday.
Your second Wednesday. So that'll be June 9th. So it'll be kind of early in the month.
Yeah, June 9th works.
Okay.
I'll put you on.
Great. All right. We'll just handle it the same way where we'll start meeting and then roll immediately into executive session, you know, just after 6:00 PM.
Okay.
And yeah, so that way we can hopefully have everyone available in June. So, so we appreciate your patience with us. But I think the information you have to share, not just on the rules of order, but even, you know, the other things around expected behavior and just other ordinances or policies that are applicable to us. I haven't had that kind of information conveyed to me either, you know, and I've been on this committee for, gosh, a year and a half, maybe two years now. So it'd be really nice for all of us to have that information.
Sure. So, um, um, since you don't have a quorum, we're not officially meeting. And so what I'll say to those who are here, I did send out to you Karen and Shalane and Chris has it, the email with all the, with the proposed presentation and the documents. Take a look at that. And so this will be your opportunity to kind of give me some feedback if there are other things that you want me to include or stress on, or emphasize, I'll say, let me know. And give me at least a day or two heads up and I'll make those adjustments for you and be prepared on the 9th.
Great. Okay. Thank you. We appreciate that.
I'll have a good.
Yeah, you don't have to stay on any longer unless you want. So thanks Erin, we appreciate it. Okay, so we'll keep this meeting short. We don't have a quorum. Shad wasn't able to do the meeting minutes. Neither he nor I could find our actual regular meeting. Shalane, the link you sent was going to the 412 meeting, which was the planning meeting we had Monday night. But I wasn't able to find the regular meeting, which was on that Wednesday, the 14th. So I don't know if you have a direct link to that.
Let me look again and make sure I didn't send you the link to the wrong one. But I thought I saw it. In fact, I'll look right now just to be sure.
Okay. Well, I even went on the YouTube channel and looked at Parks and Rec at our stream and I don't see our regular meeting posted there yet.
Karen, if you can't find it, I'll be happy to send you a link for it.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks Dave. That would be super helpful. We can't vote on our meeting minutes anyways because we don't have a quorum. So it's no big deal. But, um, you know, Shad can get those typed up once he's got that link. So I appreciate that Dave. Okay, so we'll look for that. We'll get the meeting minutes out to everybody and we'll go ahead. We won't have meeting minutes from tonight. So we'll go ahead and get these approved at our next meeting together in June. I'll just make a note, approve minutes from April. Okay, for the next meeting. Okay. Um, all right. Our next really key discussion item, number one typically is to get the update from Chris on what's been going on over the past month. And I think we should go ahead and do that. I'm not sure if this meeting gets posted or not. Dave or Shalane, do you guys know? Go ahead, Shalane. Does this meeting get recorded and posted?
Oh, it should, it should get recorded and posted. I would, yes, I would think that they all do, even if we don't have a quorum. But, but we also have citizens, citizen comments on the agenda before discussion items, in case there's anybody who has any comments.
Okay. Yes, Paul?
Hi, Chris. Oh, Erin already dropped off? Looks like, yeah.
Yeah, she dropped off.
Did you, did you convey our conversation to her?
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, why don't we go ahead and do the monthly update, even though it's just a few of us here, Chris, but still this is recorded for posterity. So anyone coming on can, you know, obviously watch, watch the recording, get the update.
Okay, yeah, no problem. This is April monthly report and a lot of it has to do with the activity that we've been doing and you guys have been seeing the city council. I presented the vision for Phase Two to Sunset Park at a city council meeting, attended a KLB meeting. I presented the Phase Two to the North Shore Democrats. That was on a Sunday and that was a nice little, nice little get together. The park and rec planning meeting we had, which I think is going very well. Attended the park and rec monthly meeting. Assisted in a tree planting at Veterans Park. A citizen donated a really nice, good sized tree at Veterans and we, Chris and I planted that with them. We started a boot camp class at Sunset Park, which was exciting to be able to get some exercise classes on the soccer field. They absolutely love it because it's the most beautiful views you can see. So nice views while you're working out. And we also just, just yesterday booked a yoga class for, on the soccer fields too. So outdoor yoga. So we're getting, we're getting a lot of headway with that. I presented a vision at the city council meeting again, ordered a storage facility for the airport, met with the Texas Park and Wildlife to discuss the point system for the new, new Phase Two. I have a little bit of a background on that. I mean, right now, they were very impressed that we've been doing these outreaches and trying to get public support. And now they think that that'll make up a lot of points. Now they're asking us to get, just get letters and get documentation that we've done that. So that's a, that's a positive sign. So that's where we're at with that right now. Ordered a new printer for the pilot's lounge. We met with representatives of the La Gavista swim team. We're trying to get a swim team going on this, this summer after taking a couple of year break. That's exciting. We met with the Highlands Lakes Outdoor folks that are, that are building our little, a little sign out of this city limits. So we got an idea of what that might look like. It's probably, we'll be able to share with you at the next meeting. We should have a final rendition of what it looks like within, within a week. So I'm pretty excited about that. And then I met with the committee to discuss that project. We met with the interim city manager and Roy to discuss the Parks and Recreation Department taking over responsibilities for overseeing the airport. I will be the next airport manager. We're transitioning into that. Parks and Rec Airport, you know, it all kind of works. So.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you. You know, and I think the biggest part of that is Roy has got a very, very full plate. And interim city manager asked me if I would do that. And Josh had talked about it before. I said, absolutely. So we'll be overseeing. I was just doing the maintenance. Now it'll be the operations of the airport. And really excited about it because it's, it's something new for me. And I think it's something that I can come in and pick off some low hanging fruit and do some good things out there. So that's kind of nice. Finalized the agreements with the YMCA to oversee the operations of the pool. We've, we've got that nailed down. At the pool, we're going to have swim lessons. We're going to have water aerobics four, four times a week instead of two, which is awesome because people really like that. Going to have a swim team. We're adding to that and that's, that's kind of nice. We continue to host softball and baseball games and practices at Sunset Park. The, the leagues, when we originally talked with them, they said they only wanted to practice on those, our fields. They played on them a couple of times and said, oh no, we want to play games. And now they're doing their All-Stars out there too. So my son who works for Marble Falls talked to the person who runs the little league there and they said that our fields are the best fields in the area, those two at Sunset Park. So people are really liking to play on those, which is nice. And there's been talk now about possibly having a fall ball softball, softball for the girls, which we hadn't had before. So a lot of good stuff happening out there. We continue to hold practices from Sunset Park for two soccer, or two, the two soccer teams. We had a flag football tournament there this last weekend that had over a hundred, 100 people there, very successful. And we've got a showcase softball, girls softball scheduled for the 16th. So we'll have more activity down there. And if you don't know what showcases are, that's where teams of older girls play and coaches come out and watch them. And it's when, when they get the first look at the, of the gals in the area, possibly get them scholarships and that type of thing. So it's a, it's a pretty big deal that we're able to do that. And lastly, I am scheduled to be the guest speaker at the Chamber of Commerce in May lunch in May the 19th. I told them they're reaching real down far in the barrel if, if I'm the guest speaker. But I think they got wind of the things that, a lot of what you guys are doing with the park and they're very excited, excited about it. So I'll be, I'll be presenting to them about what's the parks department's doing and what our vision is for, for Phase Two. So that'll be on the, May the 19th. I think it's been highly attended because it's at the winery, not because I'm, I'm speaking. So.
Great. All right. That's all great stuff. Very busy month. So, but I'm, I'm really happy to hear a lot of the programmatic stuff is really coming along. It's a lot going on.
Yeah. I mean, people just got to go out there and go, okay, I gotta be here. I mean, it was, we've had, we've had some hiccups with it, but we don't have a hiccup that it's a beautiful piece of property and it's, and people want to be out there. So.
That's great. Yeah, go ahead, Shalane.
Yeah, Chris, I wonder, we, we, the last time we met, you talked a little bit about the, it might've even been at the special session for the work session. You talked a little bit about the upper field or lower field over by the middle school. But I think there were still some questions about that. Can you talk at all about, about that? And who, like, I know you said something about from the bases in and the bases out.
Yeah. Well, no surprise, it hit Facebook. And, and what was addressed, there was some question about who should be doing what in the fields. We have, what we're supposed to take care of is from the bleachers in on the fields is what we take care, care of. Some of the pictures that were taken that were on Facebook were actually school property. So I got with Darren Webb and we, we worked out who's supposed to be, who's supposed to be doing what. So we've got things from the bleachers in, they got things from the bleachers outside of that. In the meantime, we've, we drug the field, we, we, we cut it, we got a new home plate, we ordered new bases where, you know, some of the other problems with the field is there, there's, there's not lights there. Well, there wasn't lights there because they, the standards weren't, I mean, you could, you could drive a nail through it. They weren't, they weren't safe at all. And that was done a couple of years before, before I did. One of the big problems that we have with the field, and I address this with the superintendent is, is when it gets wet there, because it's the middle school, they bring them down, they bring the kids down to play on, you know, they gotta have recess and they got, have to have PE. But if the fields are wet, they'll get on the fields. And if you, if you get on wet fields, it just absolutely tears them up. You get a big footprint in there and it dries and it, and it makes it horrible. So I got with them and said, I don't mind you guys getting on the, on, on that field. I'd love for you to, but if, if it's wet, can you just stay in the grass? And that way it doesn't mess up our, our, our infield. And if you go down there, it's absolutely worn out, worn out from home plate to pitcher's mound because that's where they play kickball every day. So we're sort of stuck with, you know, I don't want to lock the fields and keep kids off of it. But we, but it's, it's got a lot of use, which I guess is a good thing. So it's kind of hard to maintain. We drugged and cut the fields on a Wednesday. I went down there Thursday morning when it was raining and the kids were on the field sitting in the home plate making mud pies on, on home plate. I mean, it's so, it's really hard, but they really need to exercise and get out there too. So we just try, we, we just try to deal with it. So I think that was what all the, the question was is who should be doing that? We do, we do from the bleachers in and then, and then school district. Matter of fact, I went by today and their air mark guy was out there taking care of the property. They do it from the, from the bleachers, from the bleachers back. So I think we have a pretty good agreement with Darren on who should be doing what. So. That answered your question, Shalane?
It did. And that property belongs to the city or it belongs to the ISD? Do you know? Like, is there, is there, is it just an agreement that we maintain part of it?
Yeah, we actually, and I will let, let you guys see, there's actually agreement. We purchased that property and we paid maybe $300,000 or something to it. But, but we had the agreement that, and it specifically outlines just the field that we take care of. So, you know, and that's what we're supposed to take, take, take care of. But there is an agreement there, but they also, they also have usage of it while schools in, so they can do the recess in, in their PE. And when school's out, and school's out, it becomes, it becomes ours. So, um, yeah, that, I forgot what year that was, but I bet, I was looking at that contract because I wanted to be addressed this. I didn't get back with, with folks on, on Facebook to say, the pictures that you took were school property. Because, yeah, it just, it needs to get fixed and we're not going to get in arguments with folks about things. So, and I, I think we've got a better understanding about who's supposed to do, do what. But yeah, we did purchase that, purchase that piece of property. But we're supposed to maintain by that agreement just inside the, just actually inside the fences. So, but I told Darren, we can handle, we can handle up there, but I don't think we should be doing work on, on school property. And there, there's certain restrictions on those fields too, because the kids use it. I can't use certain chemicals and stuff on the field because kids are playing on the field. They want to do that. So we're a little hamstrung, but it is a field that's getting used and it's a field in the inventory and we'll take it with all the, the things that are attached to it.
Okay. Darcy, Deanna, do you guys have any questions or comments on the update? Nope. Okay. All right. Well, good. Well, thanks, Chris. Good stuff going up. All right. Onto item four, planning status and fundraising. So on our planning status, we've got basically through our June meeting to, I guess in a sense, come to agreement on and probably as an action item, approve our update to city council, which will be due in July. Important component of that is going to be Chris's update, basically reporting on what he's done year to date around both parks and programming. And then also we can add to that, Chris, probably some of the stuff we've done from a committee standpoint on the planning, on setting up the Friends of the Park and that kind of stuff. The other component will be what we're going to focus on through the end of 21, 22. So I'm almost done with typing up the notes from our planning sessions that we've had, both through the two planning meetings and then additional discussions in the last couple of regular meetings. So I will get those out to everybody this week and circulate it. I'll put a note on it so the folks not here understand what we're doing. But basically, I'm just looking for everyone to take a look through that, make sure they're complete. Am I missing anything? If there's any kind of prioritization that's been discussed on stuff, have I captured that accurately or not? Take a pass through it, make sure it's pretty complete. And then I can leverage that to kind of put together a draft, you know, report, if you will, or plan for the rest of the year and also circulate that prior to our next meeting. And so that'll be something that we can take as an action item for the June meeting. So anyways, I'll take that on because I know it's, we've had enough additional meetings for everyone. I don't want to add yet another meeting to everyone's schedule because it's getting a little crazy to get that done. I'll be on vacation for a couple of weeks. So I'll probably be getting that to you fairly closely prior to the June 9th meeting, if everyone can take a look at it. If possible, I'll try to get it out, you know, next week even to everybody. So you have plenty of time to look at it. So that's my plan on that. The other component on the Friends of the Park, so setting up the nonprofit, you know, I went on the Secretary of State website because I've, you know, formed corporations before. So I've done this before, not, just not on a not-for-profit basis. And I don't see anything on there saying that we need to have bylaws to go ahead and get ourselves registered and get the submission done. So I'm completing that form now. I've kind of put some notations on a printed out version of the form. We can actually file online, which I plan on doing because the turnaround is quicker. So I'm going to go ahead and get that going. And then Darcy, I saw the link to that resource that you've been talking about. I didn't click on it or do anything with that because I, I wanted to confirm with you. I think you had already like submitted our interest in getting help? No? Okay.
What, what that link is, is Judge Durbin gave it to me. And he said, it's a great resource for us once, once we start forming some stuff. To me, it's like I went on and I scrolled through the website and there is a lot of interesting stuff in there, you know, it's even for small businesses. But they will issue you like a, I can't think right now. Anyway, they'll issue you someone to help you walk you through this, a mentor, sorry. And from what I'm seeing right now, I just pulled up Friends of the Park. Okay? Just to Google. It, it's already pulling up Friends of the Park, BK Friends of the Park, Austin Friends of the Park, Chicago. So whenever you're filing the 301C, five, three, 501C3, I think you're really going to have to get that down, what you want our name. Because if you search us in a search engine, once we get on there, we either need to be La Gavista Friends of the Park, or Friends of the Park, La Gavista. Because if you put it in wrong into Google, if somebody's wanting to do something for La Gavista, they're going to get all these other areas. So that's probably be really important, Karen, when you file that, is to make sure that we're all square on the name. And then, uh, once we, I think we get that name in and we get, we, we go to file, we can, we can go in and ask for a mentor. And then, I mean, we haven't even had a meeting with all of us yet. I mean, not one meeting, you know? So I think maybe if you file it, we have one meeting and then we could like all of us open up the app and kind of scroll it together, maybe on something else, you know, like I have a phone and laptop. We can scroll through it and say, oh, look what all they do. And we can refresh ourselves or take notes or whatever. And then come up with a census that we want a person to come help us or we don't. Because I mean, to me, I don't want to waste anyone's time. And whenever to me that I'm asking someone else to volunteer or for a mentor or anything like that, I want to have all my ducks in a row. You know, say that this is what we have done and this is what we want to do. Could you help us get this middle part?
Right. Yeah.
And since you, you seem that, that you can fill out this paperwork to at least get us rolling, maybe once we can all meet, and if we got anybody else that wants to do it with us, I mean, I'm sure there's lots of, you know, we might even post something onto Facebook, hey, we're starting this. Would anyone want to come to our meeting? Because, I mean, you're going to get more people that are, want to be involved. I mean, Denise Sellers might want to be involved with this. Who knows? You know? So, but, and then like you said, we need to make our, our, you know, our directors and all that. So personally, I, I think that if we all just look at the website, you do what you need to do to try to get us filing and then come together in a meeting and then, then we get somebody to help us.
Yeah. I mean, that's fine. I've already got a checklist, right? Filing, Board of Directors confirming that, right? So you and Salima had indicated interest. So I sent you guys an email confirming that. Deanna, I wanted to check with you in tonight's meeting if you have any interest on being a director of it, on the Board of Director. And that's to say for the filing. Now, we can add additional board members and identify the roles we want each director to have after the filings. You don't necessarily have to do it for the filing. But Deanna, I do want to invite you to be on the board. And certainly we can solicit additional members as well and have it even be membership based. Next, it would be looking at what we need to do from exemptions. We don't have to pay taxes. So the next step for me is looking at, you know, the forms we need to do with the IRS for the federal exemption. And then there's forms for the states who are exempted from the state franchise tax and state tax exemption. So I've got the links on where we need to go for that controller for the state. I think that should be pretty straightforward. Darcy, that's where I could see maybe wanting a little bit of help or advice because, for example, I'm adding additional text to the purpose of the Friends of the Park in the filing to really stress the fact that it's fundraising and volunteerism to a public benefit. It's definitely, the funds are going to something that'll be used by the residents and so forth and by the public, you know, for the city. Just stressing it's a not-for-profit. So we'll hopefully get that tax exempt status. I'm looking at that. The other piece is governing docs and bylaws. So Chris sent me the Friends of the Library bylaws. Thank you, Chris. So that's something we could use as a template to start out with. But that might be something, from a governance and bylaw standpoint, that we'd want to have an expert take a look at and make sure we're covering our, our bases there. And then from there, we get into the fun stuff like opening a bank account, setting up a website. And as you said, Darcy, even before we get to that point, start talking to people we know in the community, you know, of our committee members and, and others that we know and putting the word out and getting people interested and seeing if they'd like to be involved. So we can do some of this stuff in parallel. So I think what I'll do is I'll go ahead and get the filing completed. Once I hear back, Darcy, from you and Salima on the information I needed and confirm that, I can get that done. And then, yeah, I, I think that's a great idea. Let's go ahead and have a meeting that's a Friends of the Park meeting and invite anyone who's potentially interested. So I've also reached out to a guy I know who does great accounting work, kind of, he's retired, but still does this kind of work on a consulting basis and just checked with him because we do need to do financials on at least an annual basis. We want to do them anyways, probably at least a quarterly basis. And he can help us with that. It would be a very cost effective way to make sure we're getting our financials taken care of. So, anything else you guys can think of on that front? No? Okay. Okay. So we got to put a few more things in place, but you know, let's get it going. I'm, I'm kind of sick of waiting on it. I don't know where the idea that we needed to have our bylaws and everything figured out first before we could file came from. So, all right. So that's pretty much that on fundraising. In terms of next steps, we talked about that already for the planning process and for fundraising. Is there anything else you guys want to discuss while we're on together this evening? No? Okay. So Shalane, this is a dumb question, but we didn't have a quorum tonight. Does, should Chad still put together meeting minutes for tonight's meeting?
I think typically all we do in this case, and I can look at the, the city website, but I, I think all we do in this case is next to the meeting itself, like on the webpage under where the agendas are posted. I think we just put like no quorum and we don't post minutes. We just have the agenda.
Okay.
Sandra can add like, you know, no quorum in parentheses and that's it.
Okay. All right. So.
Just unless you have a different, different information.
That's the same thing I heard also. It just lets them know that we did, you know, we did try to meet and.
Okay.
Wasn't a quorum, yeah. This is the first time in a long time, no quorum though. That's good. We're, we're, you know, we had quite a few last time where there wasn't it. So, and you know, sometimes the dates just don't work.
Yeah. Yeah. Yep. Everyone got hit at once tonight.
At least the agenda for next one will be easy because it'll kind of be just a repeat of this agenda.
Yeah. I know Shad will be really bummed that he can't do the meeting minutes for tonight's meeting. So, especially since he wasn't here.
I went back and looked at the, I'm sorry. I think there's a delay. I went back. I went back to the YouTube page, and I think you're right, I think I was looking at the, the work session on 412. I don't see the regular meeting posted, so, but I heard Mr. Street say he would send a link, so that's great.
And Shalane, you did get an additional, additional member, right?
Diane, yes, Diane, Chonupin. But, but yeah, she is unavailable today, she's under the weather.
Correct.
She'll be here next time.
Yep, yep, awesome.
Karen?
Yes.
Diane might be a good person to ask if she wants to join the, the Friends of the Park Committee. I think she's retired too, she's pretty knowledgeable.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I mean, let's ask, yeah, anyone on the committee? I've got a few people in mind I can ask as well that might be interested. So it's always tough because everyone gets, the volunteers, the doers tend to be stretched, right? And they're doing, volunteering for multiple things on top of whatever, family and work obligations. So sometimes, you know, someone would be perfect for something, but they end up saying no because they already feel stretched then, but I'm hoping we can get some folks that are really interested and get involved, right? We actually have both kind of fundraising and volunteer stuff going on through the Friends of the Park, could be a really cool thing. Okay, well, anything else, anybody? Nope, all right, nice short meeting, well, thank you all for attending, we'll hereby adjourn our meeting, and I'll talk to you guys soon.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.